Produce a budget that is hers for us to look at for the month of January. And by charter, we are required to have a board budget handed off to the town council, the town manager by the 27th of February. And the experience has been that in early February, late January, the Board of Ed and the town council meet to talk about what is the town council's feeling about town funds, their budget, their expectations, their questions, kind of know maybe or ask questions about what we're thinking as a board. And pre the pandemic, the then mayor Patrice and Sima, who was the moderator at that time, we decided actually that it made a lot of sense to have the education committee be part of the discussions at this meeting. So I know that this happened for many years, Dean. I know that you were on the town council for many years and that this was a conversation that that happened. So that is sort of why we're together tonight. I do know that Superintendent Austin put together the slideshow that we actually used primarily, most of them for the our public hearing. And so they are there to help guide any conversations or questions that people might have. I do ask that we keep this to the budget. And I'm also would like to sort of suggest that let's have as many questions, discussions, thoughtful points, but to also recognize that most of us have come from full-time jobs and that maybe we can hold this meeting no more than an hour and a half would be my goal. I do know that the board did want to talk a little bit about the discussion that happened in the town council, maybe last week, about the non-lapsing funds. And the board is wanting to be able to take a very thoughtful look at that. But to do that and to have our staff get pulled away from looking at those issues along with trying to support doing our budget, I have referred that topic to the Finance and Facility Board Committee. And we're looking forward to having further conversations with the town council and the town. But we would hope that it would not go into effect this coming fiscal year so that we can know more about it and see the pros and cons of that. So I just wanted to let you know that we appreciate, we also appreciate Manager Burt in making sure that we were aware of that. But I think that that's sort of where we are at the present moment. Another point of clarification is we put together several CIPs that you will notice and I that have a lot to do with the field. It's the bleachers. It is the concession stand and Fieldhouse concession stand. Help me out, folks.
Changing rooms.
I'm sorry.
Changing rooms.
And changing rooms, that's the facilities. And we put those in in that we just didn't want to have them lost in the conversation because I know that the field committee, we know that the field committee is working really hard, but there's a lot of concern that we have for those items. And we just wanted to make sure that the town could kind of look at that. But we also know that it's way above, it's it's above capital improvement. It's a bonding issue. But once again, we wanted to to make sure that people heard what those concerns were. And our other one, and I think that this was brought to us through conversations with Superintendent Austin and Manager Burt, John Burt, about our safety and security. And that will also be in CIP form. And we can talk about that when we get into our conversations. But I wanted to let you know when as you got them that they would be there. So I think that laid the land, I think, for where we are at. And I think at this point, I think that the how we're going to do that, if it's RTM education members, Mike, we'll have you recognize people, any town counselors, Juan Melendez, Mayor Melendez, will recognize and I will recognize Board of Ed members. So.
I just wanted to procedurally note that Representative Frickman is also here from the Education Committee.
Thank you.
Okay. Any questions from councilors? Councilor Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No, this is the right point to ask this question, but I just don't understand something. I don't under on your health insurance slide, can you just, which is right near the end. I just don't know what the word corridor means when you say health insurance reserve above corridor. I don't know what that means.
So I my sense is is that there's there might be people in this room that don't recognize the Board of Ed staff. And so when you begin to talk, if you could just introduce yourself, that would be great.
Is this something that we should put the slide up so people out in the audience can look at this to see what the question is? I mean.
If there's a better point to put this at in the conversation, that's fine. I just.
No, this is, I have given, I think we've done all the procedural things and the reason why behind this and sort of stuff. So it's about questions. And so if you've got questions about a corridor or about our health insurance fund, that makes sense.
Okay.
So Ken, would it be, would it be easy for you to?
Yeah, I think so.
Put that up?
I think so.
So really, there were several topics that we thought, that's why we really condensed this into kind of a mini slides because this really comes up year after year. And these are some of the major topics like revenues that support the town's budget, our Groton Public Schools budget categories and what they're made of, how does the school budget run, grants that supplement the budget, both categorical and competitive. And now we have COVID, we call them the three Cs. History of Groton Public Schools budget, per pupil spending and comparing to other districts. And then, of course, the health reserve and OPEB, which is a real, we feel it's a real civic responsibility to make sure that we pay back into that whenever we can. And then finally, the CIP accounts and priorities. So those are some of the topics that we thought might be interesting to really take a look at. And we can certainly start with the health savings and OPEB because we have the slides available.
All right. I'll put that up.
You have them in front of you, but for those who are on the screen, we can show.
So this is my very crude attempt at trying to visually show what a what a health insurance reserve is, its inputs and its outputs. And then the the red and the yellow are to indicate the the reserve, the amounts that need to stay within the within the health insurance reserve. The corridor is it's a term that health that insurance companies use and it indicates the minimum amount that as a self-insured health insurance plan, we have to, we have to maintain. And so we have to maintain 25% of annual claims. That's that's the minimum that we have to have. And then the yellow indicates the amount above that. So the that can go up and down, but you can't go any further below that that red line. I don't know if that helps on the explaining a corridor.
So basically, the way this works is that if it's 25% of annual claims, so it's two, four, six, it's eight, it's it's like $9 million is the amount of claims you do a year. So you have to have 25% of that, which is the 2.2 million.
Right.
Then you keep a reserve of another 2 million on top of that, just as a buffer.
Right, because we can't go below that. So we have to have something floating above that to in case there's additional claims beyond what we've collected or anything like that.
So you you basically keep 4.3 million in account somewhere for health insurance?
Yeah. And it's it's actually a combined account with with the town, the town and the Board of Ed keep this reserve together.
And we share our health plans together?
We do.
Okay, okay. So this is just sort of accounting requirements that you need to have 25%. And if you're for some reason, your health insurance instead of 9 million was 12 million, well, then you'd have to have 3 million in that account. So it just floats around based on the 25%.
That's right.
And then you just keep, is the the 2 million above it a self-imposed amount or is that a regulated amount?
No, above that is 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 self-imposed or it's the it's the real reserve. It's it's what we are keeping to be sure we're able to pay for all the claims that come through.
Okay, so there's a required reserve and a Board of Ed reserve.
A required reserve and then a prudent reserve.
Yeah.
Okay. And.
And then the OPEB is something that, I don't know if you're finished. I'm sorry.
No, no, I think I'm just trying to understand how this works. So employees put in 2.3 million a year, the Board of Ed puts in 5.7, which is part of the budget, part of the regular budget that we give you every year to do stuff. Lasered stop-loss claims, those would be.
So every every self-insured insurance plan has what's called stop-loss insurance. And so that's to guard the plan against catastrophic losses. So if somebody has huge losses, so our current deductible for stop-loss is $200,000. So any claims that exceed that are covered by an insurance insurance policy. We there are, the insurance company does have what they call lasered claims where they identify certain claims and say, we're not going to cover those at 200, we're going to cover those at after it hits another another level. And so that's what that is.
And that's a 300,000 per, it's a per person.
A laser claim, we only have one laser claim. So that one claim, if it goes over 200, that's 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 what we cover that.
That's what we cover that. Okay, okay. Okay, all right, I think I'm all set for the moment. I just didn't understand some of the terminology.
Understood.
Would you like to look at OPEB since we're looking at cylinders right now?
Sure.
Actually, Ken had to draw us a picture because we were all stymied with this. And when he drew the picture, it just kind of made the model kind of made a little more sense to everybody.
OPEB stands for Other Post-Employment Benefits, and this really covers our retired population. And it works very similar to a health insurance reserve, although there is no corridor, there is no minimum, but there there is a balance that we should keep to 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 cover these claims as they come through. And so it works in a very similar fashion, you know, Board of Ed contributions. We do get some funding from Teachers Retirement Board, and then retirees also make contributions. And then claims come out. But then there's a certain level that we that we keep. And once again, this is a combined reserve with the town.
This is health insurance for retirees.
Health insurance for retirees, yep.
Okay.
Okay. Councilor Parker?
You mentioned, is this on?
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You mentioned about the safety updates, security updates. Are you looking for grants? Because I know there's tons of grants out there for that.
Yes, we just, we we know, we knew that there would be one coming and we actually got several emails today and we're going to be looking into that. So, you know, we've written the ARPA grant, so we've really put together a proposal. And so we're kind of ready to, you know, do what we have to do because I have that sense of urgency. We had a study done at the high school through Homeland Security, and we got some wonderful recommendations, things that we could do right away. And then also things that tied right back into this safety security plan with more cameras, this mutual link, which would connect the fire departments, the police departments, and the schools together so that should there be any kind of emergency with the panic buttons that a teacher or a staff member would have, that they would have insight, eyesight into the building exactly where things were happening. So I'm really feeling like this is, and that was one of the recommendations out of this Homeland Security. So and then I understand, too, we just had, we meet on a pretty regular basis with the safety team team under Sam Kilpatrick. And we met as a campus, Grasso Tech, Fitch High School, and Groton Middle School just this week. And out of that meeting, we discussed these security plans. And the state police were there because they oversee Grasso. And the State Police Department already have this mutual link. So they were really recommending that the local police departments and fire departments and schools also.
Okay.
It's like a software, so it.
Yes.
And then your cameras do the work and it's pretty, pretty cool thing.
Okay. And two questions on the proposed, the purchase services, which is 300, and then the supplies account, which is 600. Can you explain those a little bit more? Paige, where's that one too?
I should have. Hey. So the graph behind it is really tells a story, if I can put that up first, because then I can kind of tell you how using the model, the GPS budget categories.
I have to interrupt. Like, there is some kind of feedback that is high pitched and it's, can anybody else hear this? Because it's pretty annoying. And if I'm sure if I can hear it, they can hear it at home.
No.
Now that you moved your microphone, it stopped. I don't know if it was me.
Scared at all.
Yeah. I heard it.
I did hear it, too.
But I don't hear it now.
They're close. Thank you. I'm sorry to interrupt.
Councilor Parker?
So before you start that, but that's not going to show what we're seeing on this page. So will you be flipping back?
Yeah, I'm going to flip it, too. So this just starts with every school budget, you know, what it's made of. And so really, the largest chunk in the blue you can see is salary and benefits at 76%. What do we give our students in school? We give them, you know, the best teachers, highly qualified, the paraprofessionals, the custodians, the cafeteria workers, the bus drivers and, you know, and bus aides. And so that really is the biggest chunk of our school budget. And then tuitions and contracted services are a slice of the pie. Transportation and transportation costs have gone up. We really have a bid that we are working on right now. And I don't, we haven't signed a contract yet, but they're working on getting us a contract. And the first year, it bid proposed 21% increase. So transportation is a big-ticket item and it's actually, it's in the green and it's a little larger slice of the pie than it had been in the past. Utilities, if you know, I know that my electric bill and heating bill, everybody's fees have gone up. This is really a year of inflation and it's not only happening in our homes, but it's happening in industry and in our schools. So so that that cost is about 3.8% and then non-contractual expenses at 4%. So if we flip over, Juliette, we can address, it's laid out, 100s through the 800s are the categories that define salaries, benefits, purchase service, property services, transportation, supplies, equipment, and dues and fees. So specifically, your question was around, can you repeat that for me so I can help answer it?
I'm looking at 300. On transportation, I understand to a degree. Well, I'm going to actually add one more, 300, 500, and 600.
So 300s are your purchase services. They, you know, one of the things that has gone up is preventative maintenance and some inflation in this case. Ken can be specific about some of those items that are in the 300s for us. And then what else did you want to look at, the 500s?
500 and the 600.
Okay. 500, of course, is that transportation cost based on the bid. And that was about a million-dollar increase to the budget. And then the 600s are all of our supplies. So the supply costs have definitely, we've seen inflation. It also includes not only from paper and pencils and all the supplies that we have in the classroom, but the the heat, the electricity, gas. So if Ken could give us some specificity around that and what's happening there.
Under under supplies, there there was, we do have a, we're do, we're seeing a much a large increase for our electricity costs as well as heating fuel and diesel, diesel fuel. Those have gone up considerably from the budget. In addition, last year, we had, we had some leftover diesel gallons that we're able to utilize this year, but we're not going to be able to utilize that next year. So that's kind of like a double whammy in that we no longer have leftover gallons to use from the prior year, plus we've got to pay higher rates. So that's that's those, that's what's really driving that that increase under supplies. And then under property services, it's the professional services, it, the 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 maintenance agreements and some of the professional services that we utilize, whether it be occupational therapy or physical therapy or other doctor services, all those rates unfortunately are going up as well.
And you've really highlighted the big-ticket items. If you see salaries are up 1.3 million dollars, the so the transportation, 1 point, you know, over a million dollars. And then I guess the the next largest is in the supplies with those increases inflationary that we have seen. Everything from pencils, paper, pens, to heating.
That's right.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, what was under purchase, purchase services? You said preventative maintenance?
It's it's preventative maintenance on on equipment as as well as, you know, professional services that we utilize, medical, occupational therapy, physical therapy, and actually computer network services also are are increasing.
I'll wait, I'll let somebody else add some more.
Sure. Okay. Moderator Ruska, I know you had an arrival at 7:28, if you'd like to place it on the record.
He was actually in the Zoom.
Oh, okay. Thank you. I had Councilor Franco.
Thank you. So this is the first time I'm seeing the presentation. And would it be possible to go through the whole presentation and give the big picture of it all so that?
I'd be happy to.
Because we're just, we're sort of jumping around instead of getting a, getting a whole big picture.
Well, that's what I had said in the beginning. So I'm so happy that you said that. Rachel, the joke between Susan and I is that years past, people have said, please don't do the presentation. And so I said, please don't do the presentation. She's like, I want to do the presentation.
I said, I think they have to have be oriented first before we ask questions.
Sorry, I just need orientation to it because this is the first time I'm seeing it. So thank you.
So we'll start from the beginning.
Actually, I should probably pull up the PowerPoint.
Actually, Mark, do you have the PowerPoint up?
I'm signed in as GPS 19 and be able to host this.
Okay.
Okay, I'm going to have to.
Yes, you don't have to do, use the PowerPoint. We can use the PDF.
Okay. All right. Okay.
All right, here we go. We're together, joint budget meeting, February 1st.
All right. Don't rub it in. Don't.
And then, of course, this is always Kim's part because she is, as board chair, always reminds us what our mission is and our goals and our belief statement. Do you want to say them?
I, I, they're there. I mean, like, what I love about this budget is that the budget really does support our mission statement, our goals, and our belief statement. So I'm just let you continue. I mean, like, I think that this budget tells a story and very soon it will become our story. Right now, it's your story.
And we are going through, while it came out of the gate at this enormous inflationary cost, it's on every page, we're going through and we're looking at areas that we can possibly, you know, reduce and carve and and look at some more, find another grant. So we'll continue to do that. And then it will become their budget by the end of the month. So we'll move it along. And these were the topics I I mentioned. So we're going to start with the revenues that support the town's budget.
That's the highlight.
Those were the highlights. I think you've seen some of those before. There's some new legislation that's come down the pike, especially in literacy, and some of those legislative mandates then become ours without any funding. So we have seen some of that, and that's in this budget as well. So with the town revenues and Ken, I'll ask you to speak to this, but really, I call it a two-thirds, one-third kind of problem that adds up to three-thirds. So about a third of the money that comes into the town to pay for education comes from different grants and other sources of revenue. The rest, of course, are paid by us as towns payer, you know, taxpayers. So I'll have Ken just go over those different excess costs sharing and.
Sure. So we get from the state, education cost sharing grant. It's been at this $25 million number for the past few years. And we have been told that this will continue as long as we're in Alliance District. In addition, we get other state funds from from the state, including magnet transportation as well as adult ed grants. Federal Impact Aid, that's about $4 million. These are funds that we receive from the Department of Education for the students that are on federally impacted land or have parents that are that that work for the government or for the the Navy. The Special Ed Excess Cost is a cost, is a grant that we get from the state that funds those those students that that have high special education costs, and they they help to offset those those costs. And Medicaid is, comes from the government part of the Medicare program. In total, we anticipate getting around $30,711,000 through those grants.
And I have to say, I really commend my staff who's worked so hard getting the Impact Aid forms and the free and reduced lunch forms in. You know, we haven't had to account for these things in the past couple of years with COVID. And there was a bipartisan bill that was passed so that we didn't have to collect the numbers. And now we're really working so hard to make sure. We we think we've got an answer to all those that are in the military. And so we're, you know, and almost, and many of them have already filled in the forms, but there's other folks that might not realize that if they work at EB or on submarines that they also can contribute. So our goal is really to get as many of those Impact Aid forms because it makes a big difference. It's not only this 4 million, but also we get supplemental funds that come to the school district that have afforded our one-to-one technology. And that comes to the tune of about 450,000 each year. So if we're below the 19% mark by even one kid, we might not get those particular funds. So it's really important to us to fill out those forms.
Right.
And then we can go by the budget categories and the superintendent proposed to some of these grants. There are the three Cs. There's categorical, which are funds that come to us through the state or federal government that we receive. We we still have a lot of work to do around these grants, but they they do, they're kind of guaranteed, not always at the same rate, but they're pretty much guaranteed. Competitive, which we all go after. So we've had our $6 million Department of Defense grant in world language recently that we've received. And we appreciate that the council and the RTM supported us in this. And then there's the coronavirus grants. And so we've received. of guaranteed, not always at the same rate, but they're pretty much guaranteed. Competitive, which we all go after. So we've had our six million dollar Department of Defense grant in world language recently that we've received and we appreciate that the council and the RTM supported us in this. And then there's the coronavirus grants. And so we've received funding for that too, to take care of some of the many needs that we've had during pandemic. And then the history of GPS budget, we really went back to twenty sixteen, seventeen. We wanted a couple of years before pandemic, during pandemic, and then into this year. And you can see that when you do an average of the percent increase-decrease, we come into about a half of a percent over those years. And then when we flip the page, looking at our per pupil spending from the same dates before COVID, during COVID and after COVID, you can see that we're below the state average, which I can call that being very efficient and good stewards. But we are getting kind of increasingly in the negative from the Connecticut average. And then if we flip over, we like to look at, well, so how are we doing compared to other districts? How are we doing compared to our local districts, our neighbors in southeastern Connecticut? And you can see that we are, we are really holding a very efficient status when you compare from Old Saybrook to Ledgerd. We just have a couple of other districts that are below us in per pupil spending. And then what is the local average and what is the Connecticut average? And then keeping in mind, we're in the G-Derg District Reference Group. And again, we are, you know, at the lower end of per pupil spending when you look at some of the bigger districts like a Bloomfield, Winchester comes in next, Hamden, all the way to Nogatuck. And then looking at the Derg average, we're below the Derg average and of course the Connecticut average. And then we just went through the health insurance reserve and the OPEB and the CIP, which Kim had mentioned in the beginning. We tried to put it all on one page, but we had a septic issue that occurred recently that we have to take care of and we, we've got it resolved for now, but we have more work to do on it. So that was added on the second page. So the first page, as you see, are, you know, we've heard over and over again about the Fitch, Fitch High School athletic facilities. We had proposed in a CIP to have a plan done. It wasn't getting done, but we were able to take some of our funds from, I think it was ARP-ESR, to actually do the fieldhouse study. And then, you know, with that, we were able to find out, well, I guess this one is really about crowning the field.
That's right.
So this is specific. And then the next one is the fieldhouse. So we've talked back and forth about the need to crown the field for drainage reasons and, but there is that committee that the council has on looking at all the fields and determining what really needs to be done. So we've really put that on hold for several years. I don't know how far this goes back, Sam, but at least maybe five years, maybe. And then it's the field, Fitch High School Fieldhouse that we did the study on to find out, so what is it really going to cost us? And so we had a team of educators, you know, including those at the high school and the athletic director, take a look at several of the proposals. And I think it was done by SLAM, who was the architects who worked on the middle school. And it came in at fifteen million, fifteen million, over fifteen million dollars. So like Kim said, that's not necessarily CIP-able, but it's something that, just to keep in mind that that's what we're talking if we want to do that.
And for clarification, that, as, we, we, the Board of Ed wanted, we put that in for a CIP last year to have a study done about that and, but we went ahead through our funds to do that and that's the estimate that we just came out with.
Right.
We just recently got it, correct?
We just recently got it. That's right. Northeast Academy, Sam, you can speak to that. I know there, there were some issues with air quality and of course Northeast Academy is built on an area that kind of very close to wetlands, if not, yeah, on them. But because of the way that he's worked out the technologies in the, in the school building, we've really resolved this issue, but there are, there is equipment on the roof that will have to be replaced eventually down the road. So if you want to speak to that?
I can, yes. Yes, so you may all remember, or if you're new, at the Northeast Academy, we had some pretty concerning humidity concerns in that building. And after we had the engineering firm, Fuss and O'Neil, look at things, it was determined that some of that equipment would, would need to be replaced over a period of time. And that's why you see those written out in years into the future. But since that time, we have instituted active dehumidification and have actually mitigated the problem. So it's under control presently. It does cost us, because we are running heat at the same time we're running air conditioning, that's the way that we dry the air out, that's coming back in. It does cost us more in oil, so we have to continue to keep an eye on that as to when it will be more efficient to go forward with the replacement of those units. But for present, presently, we've taken care of the problem with the active dehumidification.
We also wanted to have a plan on HVAC, so we've been able to take care of quite a bit of HVAC kind of emergency repairs that we needed to take care of at Fitch High School with our ARP-ESR funds because HVAC was allowable in an ARP-ESR, which is the ARPA version for, you know, education where every child succeeds act comes into play. So we were able to do that, that study on HVAC and it doesn't look like we have anything on the CIP. Can you explain that? For, we just, we know that work needs to be done, but I know that you have put in a grant. So Sam has worked with Shannon on a grant for HVAC with the state. And so we're hoping to hear soon, that's why there's no dollar amounts, but we're hoping to get some of those.
Yeah, the state put out a grant a couple of months ago and we submitted our application to that. It was supposed to be, we were supposed to be notified before the end of January, but I was told the other day that they're expecting to have them done by the end of February now and report back to us whether we get that grant or not. Apparently there were, I'm also told that, at, at the state grant office that there were so many applications for these HVAC grants that they've postponed almost all other grant work until they finish this. So almost every district within the state has applied for this apparently.
So we hope we'll be competitive. We, keep your fingers crossed. And then the Fitch Culinary Arts, this was a third plan that we went ahead and took it on ourselves. Culinary Arts is probably one of the most popular courses at the high school. And if you walked in there, it's on the vintage side of Fitch, which was part of a plant, two-part plan that was supposed to be taken care of years ago before my time. And so it really looks like kind of Grandma's Goldenrod Kitchen. It was really done as a home act. And we really are in a place where, we are in a wonderful community that has a, a amazing restaurant and culinary career pathway. So we really want kids to be able to have that experience in more of a restaurant kind of styled room. So we also want it to be able to house more than, I think we can only get sixteen students on each side. So, you know, between making that course a half, you know, a half-year course so kids can take that opportunity, you know, and having it have a level one and a level two experience, we're hoping to get more students in there. We're hoping to make it high, a high-quality facility. And in the planning, their estimation would be that it would cost six hundred thousand dollars to restructure the inside. We've also gotten grants through the Perkins Grant through, with regard to getting new ovens in. So we've done as much as we can possibly do to really upgrade the systems, but this would really help us between that and the scheduling, to really see that many of our students could see that as a career pathway and to be able to experience that while they're at high school. So that is really an important, I would say that is really a important priority. And then, of course, you see the, the cameras and the security and there, again, there is another grant coming our way, but we wanted to put it on there because I do have this sense of urgency, especially after this Homeland Security audit, that I want this taken care of. And then the bleachers, you know, if you've been in the bleachers, you can talk about the, you know, the bleachers a little bit because you had, you had those kind of looked at too, I think.
Yeah, the bleachers were obviously built and they are out of present code at, at this time. And while I was in a different district, I, I was able to build new bleachers. And so I've spoken to the contractors that we worked with there to get the estimate for bleachers for Fitch High School. So this is an estimate straight from the contractor and it includes new bleachers that would meet code to take care of handicap access, all, all those, new press box, so on and so forth. If you've been on those bleachers, you know that they don't have the backboard to prevent somebody, probably more likely, a young child from slipping through there. And that's one of the things that needs to be brought up to code along with the ADA access to, to the bleachers.
And it would be for both the Fitch fan side and then the home and visitor. We, we figured, you know, it was really our responsibility to find out, to do these studies, to find out what is, you know, what can be done and what would be the cost so that we, at least we knew what we were dealing with and then we could share that with you. And then last page, it was an add-on, was the septic issue that you've already started taking care of, but it needs more work to be completed.
Yeah. The timing, I, I don't remember when it started, but it wasn't that long ago. We discovered a sewer leak in one of the tunnels and after further inspection, we found out that it was further down the line. So we had to have a company come in with closed circuit TV and snake those cameras down those lines in the section of the building that's down near the gymnasium. So they are original sewer lines to that portion of the building, fifty-plus years old. And photographs indicate that some of the lines are plugged or scaled and allowing very little to go through. And, and that's what developed, that's what caused the leak that we had was that it was blocked up so bad that it blew another section of the pipe out. And some of the pipe is so old that it is actually rotted and does not exist. So some of that is in a soil trench now going through, under the slab of the building. So these are.
So that's actually our number one priority at this point. We have to figure this out, one way or the other.
Number one, yes. Number one for number two.
Yeah.
Thank you, Counsel Franco.
Thank you. So that was my next question was, on your CIPs, what are your priorities on your top three and, and what order?
This is the top priority that has to be done.
All right.
I, I really feel like the security would be the second, but I am hopeful that I am going to, you know, persevere with this grant. And, you know, I have to find out a little bit more about when that would be coming through and a little bit more about the grant itself. I feel the culinary, we've done the study and we've really got a lot of the equipment, but it's really important now to get that structure situated so that we can really make it more purposeful for the students, more usable and get that in good working order.
So that's your top three?
But the board chair might have another idea.
But this is your budget request, right?
This is my budget, yes.
Because the Board of Ed will be coming back and we'll be having discussions when they have finalized everything, is that correct?
I would say these are the three more emergency kind of things that.
Okay. And then I will say, on the average cost per student, I mean, on the, what is it called? The Derg?
The District Reference Group.
Yep. I mean, it looks like we have a few people that are doing, paying less than us per student, but when it comes to the average of what's in our surrounding communities, I'm sort of sad. I mean, you called it.
Very efficient.
And I sort of think it's sad and that our funding should come up a little bit more to standards of at least a local average would be nice.
You can see that Old Saybrook is quite the outlier. So anytime you're averaging, you have to keep that in mind.
Right. But it would be nice to come up and be near what I think the other surrounding communities have, as well as, when I look at your increase request for this year, you're saying you would let, this is the superintendent's request, is a four point ninety percent. And today, before I came here, I did look to find what the surrounding superintendents have requested in theirs. And what I found was somewhere between three and eight percent increases is what other superintendents are requesting at this time. So I think what you're putting forward is probably pretty average about what's going on.
It's a sign of the times, I think.
It is. I think the economy and what's going on.
But it's not that we're done. I mean, this is just what, what is out there, what I know to be true. And the board is doing a really thorough job.
Right. And that's why I say that this is your budget and what you brought forward. And I look forward to seeing what the Board of Ed does with the budget and how they bring it forward to us as well. And thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do either other body have?
I think.
Yeah, okay. We'll continue with the council. Counsel Borlon.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I guess my view is this, I'm a firm believer in supporting education and I can understand the district's, you know, numbers, but it's not what the number is, it's where the towns choose to allocate those funding, funds. So for example, if I take a hundred dollars, what I choose to spend on that versus what another person chooses to spend may be different. So we can increase all we want, which I'm all a firm believer in making sure students are properly funded. What I worry about is where the district, because as a council member, I'm only voting on the number. Where you guys choose to move those numbers within the district are your choice. So as a counselor, to be clear, I vote on the number that either the raise up or down, but what you choose to do with it, it's not line by line. So my concerns and where I stand as a counselor in the community that I represent and the people I've spoken to, and also as a parent of a, you know, two students that were in this district, underwhelmingly, I see athletic sports not being funded in comparison to our community. Again, I can support a raise, but where's the money going to go? I also see an underfunding in sports and activities that, enrichment programs that support every student, meaning every student gets to play, no one sits the bench. Examples, marching band, fencing, track, you don't have to try out, everyone gets to play. When we show up at our counterpart schools of like-minded with some that are in lower-income areas, we do not perform at the same level. I constantly have to call the school and ask, we barely had a coach last year. We hired an athletic director full-time and my son barely had a competent coach that could return because the other gentleman who was wonderful wanted to retire. I said, did we seek anyone? It was down to the wire. A teacher stepped up that had no fencing experience and were thankful. But how is it that East Lime can show up with six, four coaches paid, New London? So again, I'm a firm believer in supporting the budget, but I firmly believe that the numbers that we give, it's where you move them. As far as the athletic fields, been asking this forever, a committee was formed of volunteers because the Board of Ed had not established a plan for athletic fields. I'm a ninety-eight graduate of Fitch, the fields look the same as when I left. It's not rocket science. The Board of Ed needs to establish with a fields committee on their own, not a bunch of volunteers that came forward because nobody was doing anything. So I encourage this board to look at ways of establishing a field and track it yourself and use it and then submit and, and move. I am concerned, and people have addressed, the inequality at the fields, the fieldhouse, I think we need one. I also think bleachers are way outdated, they're not ABA compliant is the proper word. When I go to other schools for marching band, traveling around the nights, the, the state, ABA compliance, we can fix it, but it's still a travel down. So when to restructure it, it's not just fixing, fixing it, it's about having a plan, a plan that sometimes Groton lacks on, in my opinion, I speak as sole counselor. We can fix those bleachers, but they still have to come from way up top. Other schools mapped it out. When it comes to the athletic fields, we can do these little patchworks, look at our high school. high school, pipes are breaking. I was not part of local government when that idea to take a brand-new building and put it on a sinking building, why, I don't know. Bad plan, a lot of repairs needed. So here we are again, putting Band-Aids on things. So my concern is, I think until you have a plan of what your vision is or a master plan financially, to fix little random things without a master plan is going to cause this problem and be in the condition we're in. We have potholes and holes in our parking lots at school, the front doesn't look as welcoming and as decorated as other in comparison. When you go around to the old gym, the building's falling apart. The kids were coming out of fencing, looking for water machines. There's a fountain right outside the door, right when you walk in. Why do students not have access to fresh, clean, purified drinking water with a pump right there? You go to all the other schools, they have it right there. There's one way down, but students that are not in the building are not allowed down there. So I just think it's great and I, you know, as an educator, as a person who supports education, I'll probably vote in favor. But again, I speak and encourage this board and these members to seek ways to fund it. You say, you speak about, you know, owe the monies and having the quality staff. I can speak firsthand that I know that there's a lack of math tutors in that building, kids that have 504s and IEPs that are performing at higher levels, they have nobody available. So when you tell me that this number is representing staff and quality, I don't deny it. I have some great friends that work up there. But what I don't see is what percent of this budget, and this is my question, what percent of this budget is going directly to enhance and enrich our achievement gaps that make us an alliance district, that dropped us during COVID? How are you hitting the minority community? How are you achieving, making sure kids are college or career ready? For example, we were targeted as an alliance district for our graduation and our absentee rates. Why are we funding a half-day career counselor? We have quality staff, you say, I don't see it in here, okay? I think she's wonderful and I'm just, and I think she's amazing, but she's one person, half-day, in a building with almost thousands of students, four grades. We cannot fund a half-day career counselor and say that we are working towards enrichment to make sure they're college-ready. Everything I go to, I find people complaining that they don't feel that the accessibility is there. So I just, like again, I'm torn where to go. Voting it down doesn't fix these problems. What fixes these problems is where this body chooses to move the money within the district. So I'm asking to the superintendent, what percent of this budget in staffing is going towards closing achievement gaps and helping kids that are not making grade level?
There is an enormous amount. And also, we've had additional funds through ARPA-ESR that have probably tripled the number of tutors that we have had in an operation.
The high school doesn't have any. My son needs a math tutor currently, they don't have anybody.
Well, I will check on that because they should.
They told him he has to find a student and go to a Fulton Academy. It's not, should not be on the backs of Fulton Academy to provide the support. Some kids are embarrassed to go seek help from another student, we should be funding it. The other thing we don't have, SAT prep in the evenings, nothing, no enrichment. Where are those programs? We just don't meet the need. So I think we fail, in my opinion, in areas. There's a lot of things that are great, wonderful, great people, but we can only do so much if the money's not moving in a way. Fencing, we raised $5,000 with parents, with my son raising a thousand. They need new uniforms. Oh, we only get a smaller amount, the numbers are all vague and we don't have enough strips and, you know, that's an inclusive sport, it should be funded at 100%. The ROTC program, I've been asking for five years, six years. Currently, I have a son that graduated in 2021, he's actively in the Navy. I have another son that's looking at becoming an officer in the Navy in ROTC. I talked to the school, nothing has started yet. I asked about the uniforms, they don't have proper funding, I guess they got earmarked for 50,000, probably not enough to cover the uniforms. There's a lot of things I'm hearing from the school that I'm hearing here, and when I call the school, nothing's really started. It's supposed to start next year, maybe. So again, I'm going to say how I feel, that's what I've represented to do, that's what the people who contact me, our conditions of our schools need improvement. Cosmetically, enrichment, as well as definitely in the reading and math and supports, we have to fund that. Coming out of COVID, there's a lot of kids that are not making grade level and have struggled and they need the supports in place. Free lunch. Is anyone going to go to the cave thing where they're, where they're trying to work to advocate for free lunch? You know, I was told today, and then there's some posts somewhere too, it's all over the forum, so I asked my kid and other kids, hey, is it true people are being called out for being negative? Because you know what, my account's negative, I'll tell you right now, my account is $60 negative because I'm just not in the rhythm of paying on it because it was free for a year. We need free lunch in this district for all. It's okay if we have Title I schools here and there, when they get to high school, they don't become not Title I, those schools funnel into that. We can, where in this budget can we work towards making sure all of our children have the right to eat? It doesn't matter how qualified the school is, the teachers or this. If the kids are not coming fed as a district, we fail. So I speak for a community and I'm passionate about it, I'm not, I'm not going to apologize for my passion, we need to find a way in this budget, it's Groton, to make sure, even if the state doesn't do it, that we can allocate the funds to feed our students. And that's what I'm hearing from the parents that are reaching me, is they need, they need the food. So I encourage this, this body to go back and look at this budget and find a way to make sure our children are fed. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Baumgartner.
If you heard you.
You're muted, you have the floor. Council Baumgartner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's a little hard to hear, admittedly, but nonetheless, I just want to thank everyone for coming together. I know we all have a very busy schedules and don't all meet on the same day. So great to see that, see the leadership here and I want to thank Superintendent Austin for her continued service for our community, especially at a very uncertain times, you know, it's not easy to run a district after the pandemic and a lot of unique challenges, as have been mentioned, but very happy to see that this year, you know, you've proposed a budget that I think, you know, certainly are living within your means, still continuing to invest in the areas that ensure our students receive incredible instruction from our amazing teachers. And as you've highlighted, a series of capital projects that in many ways we've maybe can kicked over the years, but so important we begin to fund, as you've highlighted, some of the school security grants or some of the school security projects that you've outlined. I did share with you via email, Superintendent Austin, a bond allocation that will be made available. The governor announced today, $15 million available for school construction, I'm sorry, for school safety upgrades in our schools throughout the state. So hopefully the, we can coordinate and work together on ensuring that Groton does ask for those funds. It is a pretty sizable fund at this time, so I do believe Groton's well-positioned and look forward to working with you on that front. But I do want to change gears just as far as other CIPs that may be coming down the road. As you've also highlighted, you know, in Groton, we are so fortunate to have a great federal leadership as well, you know, ensuring that we continue to receive robust federal impact aid funding. And, you know, while that is so important, there are other opportunities that, you know, as Groton has done in the past, you know, punching above our weight with some of those DODIA grants. But as we've seen with ARPA, unprecedented funding that likely won't happen for some time, allocating dollars to ensure that our kids have, you know, safe and healthy programs in the summer. And really excited, our council worked in, you know, the well past midnight, coming together, passing, you know, really good, funding for really great programs that will benefit our students and children. So I guess two-pronged question. First question regarding ARPA, what steps are, is the school district taking to ensure that parents will be informed of some of these summer programs that will be available? And are there, have we identified ways we can coordinate kind of that flow of information to ensure that the students who need those, you know, can, can take, students that can take advantage of some of these programs get the chance to?
So we've had great success even before the pandemic, but because of these multimillion-dollar DODIA, we've had literacy camps, math camps, writing camps, STEM camps, and sometimes all three happening at once. And with the ARPA funds, we've been able to even increase enrollment. So our parents really know about it, it's a free of charge and it includes busing and meals and we have a very robust program. Our teachers love teaching in these programs and they're identified in enrichment, but they definitely are teaching reading, writing, math, and robotics. So kids love it, the teachers love it, and that will continue with, we started that at the elementary level and Principal Bass has continued it and does a four-to-five-week program at the middle school that's really a very popular program, it's STEAM. As you know, they are an international baccalaureate NYPD school, the middle school, and because of the magnet school assistant federal program of close to $5 million, when they were Cutler and Westside, they were humanities and STEM and came together as STEAM. And so the programs that the kids take during the day have a lot of enrichment opportunities with all of that. But then the summer program has been very popular. And I have to say that beyond the enrichment programs and the high school program that we have with summer school and then the special education program, we have been able to utilize our highly skilled teachers and literacy consultant specialists. And they and the tutors work with students that have been identified through our SRBI process as needing more reading, so that that is another area that we work on and families are able to, and we actually offered in-person and on Zoom so that if that's more accessible for families, that happens. Also with our Treehouse program in the summer, they do a lot of that enrichment as well. I would love to see our robotics team have their camp again, and so we're looking at all of those. And we have a communication coordinator in the district and between Facebook and School Messenger, moving to possibly a better vehicle for communications next year, we do get the word out to our families and, and it shows because we do get a good turnout across the district for all those programs.
Thank you, Superintendent. And I know you tuned in for part of our ARPA discussions a few weeks ago.
Right.
And just, you know, through our deliberation, it was very clear that counselors, when we were, you know, voting on, for example, swim, a couple of weeks of swim camp, for example, that we are very intentional about ensuring that the students, some of our, really some of the most vulnerable population we have in our community, you know, identifying families that are, you know, have, are high needs that are in, you know, facing financial distress or strain, that they would be identified to attend these camps and so, summer camps and programs. So Manager Burt, did you send over that list yet to Superintendent Austin?
Not yet. I can do that tomorrow.
Awesome, yes. That, that way we can start those, that flow of conversation with the parents and get them engaged so they can take advantage and sign up early. That way they can plan, plan their summers and, but nonetheless, you know, two, two other things, the, what I was trying to get to was that we have an enormous opportunity with the Inflation Reduction Act. You know, a few years ago, really before the pandemic, I know both Mayor Patrice Granatowski and our TM moderator, Sim Eben, were very vocal about the importance of decarbonizing our town facilities, in particular, our new schools installing solar and really making a concerted effort to, you know, to decarbonize our, our school facilities. So, you know, through the Inflation Reduction Act, there's going to be millions of dollars available for a lot of these upgrades, to the extent that it can be largely subsidized by the federal government. So I, I do think it would, it behooves this body, you know, members of RTM, council, town staff, you know, Board of Education staff, Board of Education, and really come together and dig into the opportunities that may become available through the Inflation Reduction Act to also defray the costs that would be directly imposed by taxpayers. So that's really one, one ask I would have of this whole group, very committed group of volunteers and, and our, you know, Board of Education team. And then lastly, just as far as, as the kind of reliance of this budget on expectations at the state level, if you can kind of speak to that, Superintendent Austin, I know we've talked extensively offline about ECS formula and so many other things, but, you know, kind of what our baseline is, what, what we're basing our, you know, these numbers off of as far as kind of the state level goes.
Well, we do have a board legislative breakfast at Montville High Friday, and I think we've got many attending, I hope you'll attend as well. But the House Bill 5003, which will actually be, could be a reduction for Groton of approximately $1.8 million, which are the funds that we contribute to our own students who go to inter-district magnets at Learn, New London, Legerd, Boag. So we're watching that very carefully. They've asked for testimony from superintendents, we'll probably be talking about that in the morning. So I, and I've reached out to you and to Heather and to Chris to find out more about that so that I can really be very particular about telling Groton's story. I've also worked with legislation saying we are a Navy district, people need to know about what that's all about, and while we get this impact aid, could there be potential to write a bill at our state level to have a matching fund, let's say, that could contribute back to Groton? So I think the more that Hartford knows about Groton, I think, and we tell our story, the better it's going, the more support we might be able to get.
Excellent. And then just lastly, on that point regarding the Inflation Reduction Act, you know, a lot of these credits, a lot of these grant opportunities, projects have to, shovel has to hit the ground in 2025. And so I just don't want to leave any money on the table as far as what, what the town can do as far as infrastructure improvements, things that inevitably we'll have to do as a community, no matter what, based off of how things are going in our world. So just want to put that out there and hope, hope we can continue to those discussions. And want to thank everyone, I know it's getting late, but thank everyone for, for taking the time to be here tonight.
Thank you. Council McBride, you have the floor. You're muted if you're talking.
Did you, did you call on me?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor? Was that a yes? I'm sorry, couldn't hear.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, thank you. I know the goal was to try to close this out at 8:30, so I made my comments brief and from more of a high level. I have more questions concerning how we can, how we can lower this. The reason I'm saying this is because I, when I do my calculations, I don't look at just an increase from year over year, the total budget. I look at what I call taxpayer support. And if you look at the total budget from 79, you know, .2 to 83.1 or so, it's 3.9 million increase. But my concern is that the general fund increase is pretty much bearing the entire increase. And the reason being is that the non-general fund, funds that are being received by the town isn't really increasing. It went from 30.74 to 30.71. So it's actually a decrease. So as a result of that, that total $3.9 million is really impacting the taxpayer support, not by the 4.98, but by 8.2%. So the concern is that although we say it's a 5% increase or 4.98, the real increase to the taxpayers and how it's going to affect the mill rate and the tax rate is really 8.2%. So I first want to make that point. And with that being said, I'd like to investigate some areas that we can maybe reduce. And I think two of the areas I need to get a better understanding of how it's working is the health insurance and the OPEB. And I guess my, my high-level question before we get into details later on during the budget process is that, I understand that 25% reserve, but is that, that $2 million additional health insurance reserve above the corridor, is that something that's been done consistently in the past few years? And is that really necessary? Is it more that worried about that money dropping to the general fund, so you want to fund the health insurance? Because I look at that as a pretty sizable, you know, reserve, $4.3 million on, you know, what is $9 million of plans for the year. So that's kind of my first question. My second question will be more in terms of OPEB in that is the $1 million OPEB reserve, I kind of need to get some details, and maybe not tonight's the answer, but I want to get some details too. Are we funding the ADAC? some details too. Are we funding the ADAC 100%? And then this is above and beyond that? Or just some information on that? Because these are, and then with that being said, what's the 24 budget for health insurance? And is any of this, any of this reserves being used? And with the OPEB, could any of that money be used to offset the budget increase as well? So, two main questions on health insurance and OPEBs. And then my other question that I'd like some detail on in the future is more regarding employees. Are there, how many new employees are being added to the budget? Were there any eliminations of employees and so forth? So, I'll stop there. And if you can provide me some high-level understanding at this point, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you get all those questions?
Is that some? I think that's something we'll have to get back to you on. You had many questions. I really need to listen back. It's hard to hear. I don't know. It's hard to hear, I think, both ways, on the screen and here. But I will capture that and even send you an email to make sure that we've gotten them all. If you wanted to even list them out and send me an email, then Ken and I can take a look and work on that to get you the accurate answers.
And we will make sure that it goes to all the town councillors.
And we'll make sure it goes to all the town councillors in RTM.
And RTM, sorry.
Great. Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Chair Whitney, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I do. It's actually back sort of to the athletics budget and then along with that, the CIPs. For the athletics budget, I was just kind of looking through the detail of how much goes the high school sport. And I was expecting to see a disparity between the total going to predominantly male sports and female sports because football's an expensive sport, equipment-heavy. And indeed, there is that. But I also was surprised to see that boys and girls soccer teams, the girls soccer team in the budget is $1,000 less. It's the same thing for boys and girls lacrosse, baseball, softball. And it wasn't that way, I believe, in last year's budget. So, I think, I think that's, that's a minor thing in terms of dollars to fix, but it's a major thing in statement of commitment and equity, gender equity in sports. So, that's one thing, as RTM Education Committee, we'll never be able to drill down that low. But while you're working as a Board of Ed, I'd recommend kind of taking, taking a look at that. Where we do come in, RTM Education, of course, is the CIPs in a big way. And I think it's, it's a great idea, of course, to not only make the case that these facilities are in need of updating, major overhauls. I think people will buy into that part. But also make a good case, a strong case, that it's an expensive investment and it's going to be equitably for both boys and girls, athletes and band and everything else. Because, I mean, my perception rightly or wrongly is that that field is mostly for football games. And of course, the marching band's there as well. I know it's used for other things, but I think that making the case as best you can for the gender equity of like investments in the fieldhouse, I'm sure it's going to be ADA, you know, coming up to those standards. But also, I know there was, certainly it was built at a time when it was only for, for boys and there's been changes for that. But really, you've got to make, in my view, make that strong case because it is a big investment for the town and it's every bit as important for us to invest in our girls as much as we do our boys. Thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, do you mind if I call on members who are here in the audience?
Yeah, I think that'd be much easier. And then I'll also note that Representative Frickman is here online. And he may, I don't see if he has a question, but after you call on people in the audience, maybe we'll, we'll ask him to.
Thank you. Representative Chase?
No, I'm first in my hand to Kim.
Oh.
No, when you were saying who you were going to send an email to. Okay, absolutely, absolutely. It will go to this group, groups.
Do you have any questions?
Yeah.
Okay. Representative Gustafson?
Thank you. In regards to the free lunch program, there's currently three schools in the district that don't have that. Is that correct?
That's right.
Do you have an idea what it costs to fund that? Like, what would that additional funding do?
So, the board did take a look at that. And what the decision was that any child who had free lunch or reduced lunch, the reduced would be taken care of by the board. So, it's only the students who can afford to pay for their lunch that are paying. So, but it does require that they fill in the forms. So, there, you know, there could be families out there that haven't filled in the forms and are paying. But it was, I can't remember the exact number, but it was a very large sum to take on this year. I do know that it's going through Hartford right now to pay for lunches completely. And I'm very hopeful we'll find out more on Friday at the Legislative Breakfast to see where that is. Because it does make a difference that our kids have breakfast and lunch every day.
And that's, so that's for the whole district, hopefully you'll find out on Friday?
Yeah. And then if, as we've collected these, we've also had the intention to be able to resubmit for the CEPs, which make it eligible for an entire school. And you can even link some schools together. So, our goal is through this process to go back and make, see if we can't get the other three on board. So, doing it in this way, that that would be more sustainable than just using ARPAS or funds that into the future. Because I think these CEP schools, the four of them, Thames River, Catherine Klonowski, Mystic River, and Groton Middle School, they go for, what is it, a three or a five-year period?
Four.
Four-year period, right in between. So, we really do want to do this as a whole district. And, you know, we're working on it. So, hopefully, between what the state has in mind and collecting all this data that we've collected, we'll be able to go back and see it through.
Thank you. One other thing, as far as the culinary area that needs, you know, that project, would it be feasible to have like a tour of members of RTM or town council they wanted to go take?
I would love to.
Lay eyes on that?
Yes, let's do it. It's the whole vintage wing, and that's where our career program is. And we, through Congressman Courtney Grant, we do have a full-time career counselor as well for the next, I think, it's a year and a half we have. And she's been able to do some tremendous work and really get these career programs moving along. So, it is really a major goal of this board to get that moving. Thank you for asking. We'll make it be.
I'd like to address a couple CIP questions. When you talked about a grant possibility, would that be both for F and G for the district safety?
It's for the whole package deal. I will put it in for all those needs and the panic buttons.
Perfect. And when we talk about the sewer lines, is that something that can wait for the next budget? Or is that emergency work that needs to be done sooner rather than later?
Are you meaning next year?
Correct.
No.
No, it has to happen.
No.
It's been patched, but some of those lines are so clogged, they need to be done now.
Okay. So, should we assume this is going to be coming through ASAP? Rather than it being in the budget, is this going to be coming through now, immediately, the sewer line?
So.
Are you, are you planning to hold this sewer line CIP for the budget? Or is this going to be emergency work immediately?
No, I can wait till, we would do it during the summer when the kids aren't in the building.
Thank you. That was my question.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Counselor Portelon?
I just had a question. One of the things that people reached out to me, and, well, I guess my question is, this is the superintendent's budget. And with no disrespect, when the town manager gives us our budget, we as a council then might say, what can we do with and what can we not do with? And we might move that number. It might be the same percent increase. But I encourage this board to find a way to fund the remaining students that are not being funded and ask those questions to see what else you can do without in this budget to make free lunch for all. A lot of people who don't qualify, and the ones that are hardest hit are the people who are in the lower-middle class, who make enough to not qualify for anything. But then they get nothing. And so, some people were offended. I will, I'll tell you this, in the community, single moms that had two and three kids that made just enough not to qualify for free or reduced, the district's giving frees free, reduced is getting it free, and everyone else is having to pay full price. So, if you're going to give frees free and reduces out of reduce, couldn't you at least, if you couldn't fully fund it, maybe say, we'll give them a reduced rate? That would be the bridge or the middle, you know, you can't help a class but not help everybody. It goes back to the equality in the field. So, I just encourage, if we cannot fund free lunch for all, maybe there's a way that we could bridge that gap to maybe make full pay instead of the high school 325 and then there's breakfast. And it's almost $5, $6 a day. Some people can't afford that with three kids. It's hard to bring a high school lunch to school with the locker situation and moving around. I know it's hard, but I just encourage, I know, you guys go back, the superintendent gave you a budget, you as the, you as the board have a chance as the voted elected people to go back and relook at that. That's my ask. And with that, children are athletes. A lot of them are performing. And because of not the school's problem, but because of federal guidelines, these serving sizes are as they are. I have a son who's 6'2" and I was talking to other people who have other kids. You get one slice of pizza and some sides. If you're leaving right from school for football, a football game or basketball game, and you already are free reduced, what are those kids eating for that six o'clock game that they're driving to Bridgeport for? I went to the Booster Club meeting recently and there was a concern. I asked NFA, I was there for a fencing match, and a whole basketball team came two hours early. And I said, wow, what a great kids. What are they doing? She said, they come first to eat. The school feeds them at practice. So, we can, we can rally around our athletes and say, wow, look at Joey who wrestled. But if you look overwhelmingly in a lot of districts, there's been kids that have passed out. They need, they need food. And so, the free reduced kids, that's great. You're giving those free. Let's take it to the next level. We need to make sure the kids, before they go to sports, a lot of these teenagers, I don't know anyone that eats one slice of pizza for lunch, and they charge a full amount at 325 for the next round. They can't afford it. We have to have a way to have a bridge program to make sure after-school athletes can eat and perform at the levels that they can. That is my sincere ask. I just hope that we can do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Representative?
I just would appreciate not to be cut off in that way. Everyone else spoke as long as they wanted to.
Counselor Portelon?
And I didn't thank them to get me off. But if there is a time limit, I appreciate it. I am here to advocate for.
Counselor Portelon?
Thank you.
I'm sorry. I have a representative present.
That's fine. I just ask for the same respect.
No, no one, no one cut you off.
Representative Frickman?
Oh, yeah. Thank you. So, I just had a couple questions. One, I wasn't sure if we looked at different options for that fieldhouse rather than replacing the entire facility? Did we look at options to not have locker rooms out there or just send the kids to have locker rooms back in the building and just replace it with bathrooms? Was that even an option? Or was it just, I want to replace the whole thing bigger and better?
No, the architect came back with two options. One was to completely knock down that building and build new. And the other option was to add on to that project. But I, I don't, they did not go back into the high school. Everything was conducted down at the field, meaning the concession stand and the fieldhouse, looking at.
But realistically though, we could have the kids use the building facility that already exists rather than replacing a fieldhouse. Because I think we're kind of unique, right? In regard to having a fieldhouse down there with locker rooms and everything?
Well, some.
Because a lot of the high schools I've been at.
Some, some teams do use the high school presently.
Okay. All right. So, I was just curious if there were options looked at, instead of replacing that at all and just having the kids use the locker rooms inside the main facility? Was that even considered or?
Not as part of this study, but some teams do use the locker rooms presently at the high school. Not every, not every sport goes down to the fieldhouse.
That's what I'm saying. So, if nobody used the fieldhouse, we wouldn't need to replace the fieldhouse at all if we just used the building. I guess, I'm, I guess I'm thinking, I'm wondering if the superintendent had thought about that or people looked at that as an option?
They didn't look at that. But I suspect that there would not be enough room at the high school to, without adding on to make that, to service that many more athletes. There are quite a few lockers down there in the fieldhouse presently.
Okay. Is it possible that, can the superintendent look into that for future meetings? Because I, I'm wondering if that's a possible option for us instead of spending this kind of money for a fieldhouse?
We could look into it, but there's other outside buildings that really are not acceptable, that are with a lavatory space and then trying to, you know, provide, you know, hot dogs and popcorn and all of that. So, you know, it's that whole facility. I think someone said it, that making a plan for this, like, what is that plan going to look like so that we can be proud to walk out on that Fitch Field?
I also think, if I could just interject for one second, I also think that, and Rachel, help me out on this, that the Fitch Fields, the backend of Fitch, that's what I learned, is, is that stuff is part of the field committee's sort of plan. So, we are just gathering information for the, we just kind of gathered information for the field committee.
Right, okay.
Yes, that is true as well. And they're looking at different options as well. I think the question that was just asked about using the indoor facilities is probably athletic director kind of type of question. And I think they have proposed this to him and there has been a response that I think the Athletic Fields Task Force has received. And that was in the negative of what the fieldhouse does and how it's utilized. And I think it's not really conducive to use the schools for that fieldhouse. And that's why they probably have it. So.
Okay. I follow two more, well, really one more question. So, I noticed, you know, over the last year, we consolidated the bus routes and in the hopes of saving money. Yet, we have a 10% increase in busing and transportation. And over the last few years, of course, we've consolidated all the schools, yet we have a 25% increase in supplies. And I know inflation regarding the rate of inflation and the price of stuff. However, the quantity should be less at this point based on what we paid for in the past. And I guess I'm concerned with, I'm wondering about that 10% increase on busing especially, knowing that we just consolidated last year. And so, I was hoping that maybe for future, we could have some answers on those two.
We can look into that, but we still have the same amount of students. So, you know, we're still dealing with very large, a very large middle school, a very large high school. And yes, the routes were consolidated, not for the purpose necessarily of funding, but for time and efficiency in route so that kids weren't on the bus for too long.
That shouldn't save us money though, right?
It did not save us money. No. We had the same amount of buses and the same amount of students.
Wait a minute. Well, we consolidated routes with less bus routes and it costs us 10% more.
There was a 21% increase in a bus bid last year, that's to this year. That's what the, that's what you're seeing, a million dollar increase in the bus.
I get, okay. I guess I'm, I guess I'm really too, I mean, hopefully there's an answer, more of an answer to that. Because I guess I'm really confused how we consolidated with, with multiple kids, bus routes, high school, middle school, and yet we're still paying more money. Right? That one confused me. And then the consolidation of supplies, I'm still, I know we have just the same amount of kids and actually maybe more kids as we go. But with less schools, there should be some less supplies. No?
Well, not necessarily. I mean, you still have the basic supplies and per pupil spending. So, you can look at your per pupil spending. And we're getting further and further away from the state average in the negative. So, that's called efficiency when you look at the whole package deal.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just had a clarifying question real quick.
We have, we have other councilors and representatives with questions.
May I ask a clarifying question just in response to that, just because it goes with that?
Other, other representatives will have the floor.
It's a quick clarifying question. Okay.
Moderator.
Representative Chase?
Thank you, Madam Motheria. I'm not sure if you can answer this because tonight is the first time I've heard of the Inflation Reduction Act.
I've, me too.
So.
Can you put, yeah.
So, if, I have questions about it. So, what can it be used on? And can it be used on your CIPs? And that would be fabulous if it would.
I'm going to find out Friday morning at that Legislative Breakfast. Yes, absolutely.
That'd be great. Find out what the uses are, how much you can apply for.
Yep.
That would be fabulous. Thank you.
Thank you.
I believe that's everyone.
Counselor Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to, I have a question, a couple questions on the educate, the grants review revenue. Is that, which is 6.5 million, is that included in the... Is that, which is 6.5 million, is that included in the, is that included in this 30 million? Is that where that money goes? Is it separate above?
Separate above.
So it's, so out of the 80, what is your money? So is it included in the 83 million?
No.
So it's, it's really 89 million is what you're really bringing in. So this is a separate and above-
Right.
-money that comes from those grants.
And they're very specific, the categorical, give you very finite ways that you can spend that money and for what reasons. A lot have to do with closing the gap, especially with the title funds. So those are made specifically, our alliance grant in the past have also done that. And then the competitive grants, we write these grants for specific reasons and they're usually for education and professional learning and things that we can sustain over time after the grants are done. So those are really created to, you know, to go along with our teaching and learning plan and to really sup, supplement.
So I guess-
Not supplant, supplement.
So your real-
Now shall not supplant.
Your, your real budget is really almost 90 million when you add all the money to it. Can you just talk a little bit about the, on the coronavirus grants, it's $3 million. How much longer are those grants going to go on for?
That one goes through 2024. And, and like I said, we've really tried to make sure they were for education acceleration, those tutors that we supply in the summertime to really have recovery from the coronavirus.
So you have, you have one more year on that.
One more full year.
Is that, when that money runs out, is that going to affect your budget in the school system, that you're going to lose $3 million?
We've already got a plan for how we're not going to have a cliff, that we've really utilized these and we've moved things around so that we've been able to support them in other ways too, especially when it comes to staffing. We have a, a couple staff members, but we have some ideas on how that's going to, you know, how we can continue that.
So you have a plan to, to absorb that-
Yes.
-money so we can stop and you're okay with it?
That's right.
And then if I just, if you go to the expenditures per pupil, so as we moved up from 2017, 18, 19, 20, it sort of grew at a, you know, at a, I don't know, $100 a year or something rate that you grew. And then COVID came in there and sort of threw the numbers out of whack. So the extra money that was from COVID was really money that was given to the school system to do things like PPEs and medical supplies and it really wasn't directed to student education, it was more medical, is that?
So these are the operating budget, we take the entire operating budget and we then divide it by the number of students to get your per pupil cost. So that didn't include those extra categorical grants and the extra ARPESR grants. Those were specifically around the operating budget.
Okay.
Divided by the number of students to get that per pupil spending.
So the increases from those two years, which you sort of see as outliers, the sort of odd, what would that, just give me one thing that might have contributed to that? Where was that money spent that made that go up so much?
I think we could get back to you on that.
I'd get back to you because I want to do a good job looking into that.
I'm just sort of looking if you took that money out of the system, sort of what's the natural growth that you had every year?
I get it.
It just sort of seems if you take those out and brought it to the normal number, your 17, nine would really be 17,000. So I'm just looking at what's a normal progression if you didn't have sort of COVID in the middle of it and you maybe still have effects of COVID in there, what is why the number is sort of out of the range of all the other numbers?
Well, especially when you look at the estimate for this current year going back down.
Yeah, it's going down, but it's didn't, it's not going down to where it would have been if you had sort of the normal growth. So that's why I'm just looking at that, so. Yeah, if you just kind of wear that-
It's a good question. I'm going to look into it for you.
Your, your growth was normal, it's going along at a certain rate and suddenly it spikes, which is understandable because of COVID, but it doesn't come back down and maybe the curve is still, it's still on a curve. So that's just kind of explanation. And then the other, only other thing I'll say is, I was born in 1954, so I understand the, the age of the system. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. Counselor Bordelon?
Thank you. My clarified question was to the, the gym area where the changing rooms are, locker rooms, those are, have not been updated in how long?
I, I'd have to look, look back in the records, but I, it's been quite some time.
Since you were at Fitch High School using that gym?
Probably. Yeah, so I, I am concerned, I mean, if we were to make that the fieldhouse rate, it, it still has what they call, and I hate the word, was this what they use in the military as the showers, as my son called it? They still have the gang showers, which are the old spindle with no curtains and everyone just kind of, I, I implore everyone to go into that locker room. Again, I graduated in 98, it looked like that when I arrived in 94, 95 and I heard it look, so that whole wing is completely outdated. So there's a lot of work to be done. As far as the piping, have you reached out to the state to see if there's any funding for that? Because I feel like that's critical and I just wonder how we can do more preventative maintenance so we don't get to the point where it's disintegrating in the ground 50 years later. Is there a plan in place budget-wise that you guys do throughout the year? Because I'm sure that pipe was bad a year ago, five years ago, 10 years ago. I just, I'm just curious. Because I, I've never seen this come up on a, on a, on a CIP, so thus far.
This just happened.
Right, but before, like, you know, in my house, I don't let my roof get to the point where the water's coming in. I know that someone comes out and says, in 10 years, you're going to have to replace your roof.
Yeah, these, these sewer lines are under slabs where they're not accessible at all until they come through a tunnel. So that's, that's how we discovered it, it was when it started leaking in the tunnel. Those lines are disintegrated under the slab areas where they are not accessible. But yes, we've, we've, I've talked to the state about potential grants and we are continuing, we have a grant person here at the board and we're looking into other areas, other places to find grants if, if they're available.
Okay. Then I think that was, my only other, just also again, to reiterate with the sports, reference with Mr. Whitney, I agree, the equality for male and female athletes need to be addressed. You know, overwhelmingly, a lot of things aren't budgeted at the same level and I just really think that we should. I also encourage the board to consider looking at ways to provide feeder programs in the middle school to enhance the high school program so we can be even more competitive. A lot of schools are bringing in eighth graders to marching band when we go to competitions.
We do.
They're also bringing in-
We do.
They're also bringing in color guard. We don't have eighth grade marching band as of this past year. We did, we had one color guard person, but I was told there was some pushback at the middle school level and not letting the band people come up, I don't know. But we, that was something I had brought up. Fencing, it'd be great to have a feeder program for fencing, wrestling, this is what other districts do as a way of enhancing the high school programs because we're seeing a decrease in numbers. So any way that we can start funding in this budget, ways to have a color guard, a marching band program, and those programs are only going to enhance the quality at the high school level. And that's where I think we kind of fall short. A lot of the kids get up there, never heard of fencing and, you know, it's great they come on as freshmen, but we can do better. Let's, you know, offer that enrichment much earlier on. So those are things that I, I hope to see in, in years or if, if not this budget, there's still time to kind of look back and look at ways that we can collaborate and do a little bit more. Thank you.
We are a campus now, so there are all these opportunities being right next door and getting out at the same time, so.
Right, that's what we were told with the, with the bridge. So this would be a great way to bridge those programs, is start allowing for a collaborative campus of, of, you know, extension and enrichment programs. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to make a motion for adjournment for the Board of Education. All those in favor, can I take a motion, please?
Motion.
Motion to adjourn.